Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the regular meeting for May of the Alexander Board of Education.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the regular meeting for May, the Alexander Board of Education.
I'd like to call the meeting to order and have roll, please. Here.
Josh.
Yes.
Steven.
Yeah.
Aaron.
Yes.
Yes.
If everyone would please rise for a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice in all.
I need a motion to adopt the agenda, and if everyone's noticed, we have one addendum, two items that we've added to the agenda. So I'd like to have a motion to approve that, please.
So moved.
Seconded.
Blake?
Yes.
Jay? Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
Steven?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Mr. Hampton.
For once, I don't have a lot that I'm going to talk about today. I'm actually going to pass this over to Mrs. Carr, and she's going to talk to us about a Title I, a Title I report.
So the timing actually worked out perfect. This is our... So every three years, we have to update our district plan, and that's what we're doing academically, what we're trying to work on improvement-wise. And that way, we have a chance to revisit what we've done and if we need to make modifications. Historically, and most districts have three goals. The three goals are reading, mathematics, and then a climate goal. And as you can see on the piece of paper that I handed everybody, that's what we have as well. For the last probably six months, we've been working in our district leadership team, our building leadership team, to identify what our needs are for the building, do a full needs assessment on all of our academic programs, go through and create a plan for our district based on the needs of both buildings, and then kind of put it all together into one formalized plan. As you can see, our goals are basically to increase our number of students on track by the end of the three years, by 9% of our students, with essentially being roughly a 3% increase per year within those three years. There are different strategies for the different goals. For the English Language Arts goal, a big focus for us right now is our Tier One, in trying to make sure that we are teaching rigorously and consistently across grade levels for all classes and all subject areas. But especially for English Language Arts, we have a new curriculum this year in the elementary, so that's given us a good foundation to build off of. So we are going to be working on in the next three years, really doing progress monitoring, looking at student data, seeing how our students are growing, implementing a reading intervention program at required grade levels. This year, it was kindergarten through fifth grade was required. Next year will be kindergarten through sixth grade, and it'll keep going up by one grade level every year all the way through. So our students who are in fifth grade right now are going to pave the way for having that grade level of students who are required to be served with intervention. We are also going to have a six through 12 intervention and RTI teams. Basically, that means a team at six through 12 to look at individual student needs, help put supports in place for those students, and these are students who are not necessarily in special education yet. We've had something pretty similar at our elementary for a number of years, but we're seeing the needs increase, so that's something we're wanting to really focus on for our junior high and high school students. For mathematics, we are wanting to increase our teacher capacity for exploratory instruction. Probably when most of us in here learn math, it was very straightforward. How do you get to the answer? Yes, and I, as a former math teacher myself, that makes perfect sense, but we are in the middle of a shift where we are trying to focus on the process as well, and trying to help basically create students who can think and problem solve and go through and not just get to the right answer, but understand why and how they got to the right answer. So we have been working on that shift at the elementary actually for a few years, and now we have stretched that up to six through 12. We have a new curriculum we started this year, and our test results, which we'll be sharing those in the near future, actually show that it's going pretty well. So we're excited for that. We also want to increase consistency in assessment practices. The elementary, we especially want to work on using online assessments and computer-based assessments. At the six through 12, we just want consistency across the grade level. So those are a couple of the things we're working on there. And then our climate goal, we really want to focus on attendance. If the kids aren't here, they can't learn, and that goes for staff, too. So those are two things we really wanted to focus on is making it the place that people want to be, and I think it already is, but doing everything we can to support students and get them here more often. So we are going to be looking at PBIS, which is the Positive Behavior Interventional Support. That's a requirement for Ohio. We have already had that in place here in our district, but we're really working on fine-tuning that and improving that to make sure that we're meeting our students' and our staff's needs. So a couple of the things we are doing under that one is really monitoring that data. So we have been doing a lot of those processes. I know I've been working with Mrs. Rouse and Mrs. Lucas, something that they're really focusing on for next year is looking at putting a system in place to track some of that behavior in attendance data. And we really want to increase opportunities for families to be engaged and involved here. And that's always obviously a focus. We want families involved, but I think we need to be a little bit more intentional, and that's something that both our buildings talked about, finding ways to bring families in, have them participate, have them know all the great things that are going on here. So that's going to be a focus in both buildings for the next three years. And so a couple of reasons why I wanted to share this. I think this is important. This is kind of the driving force behind our school improvement teams. We meet monthly with our teacher-based teams and monthly as well with our building leadership teams, and then our district team actually meets tomorrow, where it's our administrative staff, some teachers, and different support people throughout the building. But this is what drives what we focus on. We talk about math, we talk about reading, we talk about the climate, and kind of just giving a focus and purpose behind all the different things we do. But then the other side of this is we also receive title funding, and a part of that is yearly, we want to get feedback to make sure that we are not only doing what we think is right in the building, but the community thinks is right, the community prioritizes, and just have an opportunity for people to hear what our plans are and what we're working on. That way, there's an opportunity to kind of share some information if there's something we're missing. I know I went very quickly. I think I promised five minutes, and I think I'm under that at this point.
Do you have any of the baselines on these? We want to increase by 9%.
Yes.
Where are we now? What percentage of the students are performing at grade level?
I have all of the baselines. Mr. Hampton, I actually looked at all those today. It varies by grade level. Our plan is to look at the end of the year for this year as our baseline for this plan, and then build off of that. We don't, we do not have our language arts assessments back for the school year. We just got math back on Tuesday, and so we're going to use the data from the end of this year to be the baseline of this. That way, we're going to measure off of that. But I do have the beginning and end of the year data for everything. I'm happy to share that with you. Other questions? Any questions from the group, the crowd, our loyal fans? All right. Thank you.
I could talk about a lot of different things. Obviously, if you came tonight, you know that we're hosting the TVC Track Meet, and we finally get to showcase our track in its full capacity, and really excited about that. If you've been down, it's been a great event so far. I know I ran into Blake while he was down there, but it's a really nice night. We've got a really nice facility, and we're finally being able to take advantage of it. So that's pretty special. Putting a bow on the end of the year at this point. Lots of things happening. You start talking about kids and the big moment that our seniors are facing, and a lot of the other kids, a point of transition. When you start talking about going from elementary to middle school and then on to high school, from middle school, just different important moments in life. There's just a lot of emotion. There's a lot of excitement. There's also a little bit of, I didn't realize I was reaching that point. You know, we have a couple of administrators that are retiring, and so Mr. Raines and Mr. Dosick have put a great deal of time into Alexander local schools. So those are big moments for them, and I can appreciate that these days are very emotional, probably with excitement, probably with a little bit of, I don't want to say dread, but letting go of something is sometimes hard. But we do appreciate all the work that they've done and all that they've contributed to the school. We have other people in different transitions of life, so there's just a lot of emotions at this point in time in school. So it's a good time to be here, and it's a good, it's good to be a part of that. It's quite an experience to watch people and their emotions in these big moments. So other than that, we're continuing to work on our finance, and Kim is going to talk a little bit more about that, well, actually, a lot more about that in detail, about the work that we've done in finance with our school finance and expenditures and revenue and all of that good stuff. There are also some forces in play that we have little control over, and we'll talk more about that later on.
Okay, this is the May financial forecast. The High Department of Education and Workforce requires the school districts to file the forecast on the operating account, which is our general fund, twice a year, in November and in May. The forecast is a planning tool used to help make sound financial decisions. The amounts are as of today. They are projections on what we know now. Start by looking at the summary. Let's remember that forecasts are based on fiscal year basis. Fiscal years run from July 1 to June 30 of the next year. So for fiscal year '25, we start July 1 of '24 and run through June 30 of '25. Okay, so if you're looking at the top graph, the blue bar is the projected revenue. The yellow is the projected expenditures, and then the line is the cash balance. From this graph, you can clearly see the blue bar, which is the revenue, dropping from '25 to '26, and that's for the loss of the income tax levy. And then it remains flat through the rest of the forecast. While you see the yellow bar continues to increase each year. And if you look from the bottom table, you can see that we start deficit spending in fiscal year '26, and will continue without new revenue. So here's the current year projected revenue broken out into three categories: our local taxes, our state funding, and all other revenue. As you can see from the pie chart, our revenue is pretty evenly split between local taxes and state funding. This slide breaks down the current year projected expenditures into three categories: the personnel expense, the purchased services, and the all other expenditures. The forecast is presented on the operating count, which is the general fund. But here at Alexander, we have a school-wide pool, which we make a transfer to each month. When we move that transfer to the school-wide pool from the general fund, we use it to pay our elementary staff. So on this slide, I took the transfer out of the all other and moved it back up to salaries and benefits, so you can see true, more actual numbers. But if you compare this back to the numbers in the forecast, they'll be off for the transfer. This table shows line by line the projected revenues. If you look at the total revenue from '25 to '26, you'll see that $2 million drop from the income tax levy that expired in December of '24. Also, the operating transfers in was for the energy conservation notes we had from a 2010 energy savings project, and it was paid off in December. So the only debt we have now is the ARC loan, which we still owe around $810,000. This is our projected revenue as of today, if things stay as they are now. There's a lot of potential changes out there with the state, at the state level, with their budget that could affect us and many other districts. We'll have a couple of slides on that at the end. This bar graph is a good visual to see how that revenue breaks out. The green is representative of the levy. You can see it starting in '22 and then building and then running out. And the blue is the real estate taxes. You can see we've got a minimal increase when we received the large reappraisal, jumped in '24, '25, and you can see how it just remains flat throughout the rest. And the biggest changes are on the projected expenditures. There's one major change, the capital outlay expenditures. We looked at our capital plan and moved some things around. Some of the larger expenses, we moved to the capital facility maintenance fund, which was created when we had, when we got the bonds for this building, the school complex bonds. A portion of that went into a capital maintenance fund to take care of the building. And so that's what we are moving expenses out of this general fund to use up the money we have saved up in that O-34 fund, to that capital maintenance fund. Some of the major projects we moved was the elementary roof. We talked about that last fall and moved that, and we're working on the chiller number two right now. Some future projects, we have junior high and high school roof repairs, waterproofing of the building. We have some switch gears and a hot water boiler. These changes are approximately $1.5 million in savings to the general fund. We're still going to spend them. It'll just be out of the O-34 fund. It can only be spent on maintenance to this building. Yes. So we can't use it for parking lots. We can't use it for the ARC. We can't use it for the district office, just what the bond was for. Even though we have a healthy fund balance at the end of fiscal year '25, we are projected to start deficit spending next year and continue. And it doesn't take long to use up a reserve. As projected today in FY '29, which is four years, we could be down to $7.5 million, which is just 2% of our new cash balance policy of 30%, just three months operating. This is the end of the May forecast. The next couple of slides, I talked about they're hypothetical. They're just to show the effects of what could happen depending on what's going on at the state level and the state budget. Mr. Hampton's going to give a little brief on that, and we have a couple of slides.
There is a lot happening politically, and right now, it is speculation. So making plans on speculation is dangerous, or making big changes on speculation is dangerous. But there are several things happening. The governor's budget is represented by the green line. That was proposed by him, and that was the most impactful to public schools. The next line up, the red line up is the one that's diving less severely, is the House version of the most recent budget, and these are two-year budgets, by the way. So these are the impacts to, again, public school, and it's based on the funding support that's given at the state level. And the current proposal is the blue, and it is less impacting, but still, or that's our current.
The blue is our current forecast.
That's our current forecast, yes. That's our current forecast.
That's where we're at right now.
So we have the House version, we have the governor's version, and it's in the Senate at this point, and it's being tossed around by the Senate. And we've done a lot of work politically in trying to get influence and understanding with our legislators. And that's a challenge. There's a big push at this moment towards supporting community schools and charter schools and those kinds of private institutions. And that money comes from somewhere. The money that's being funneled into those groups is coming from what was going into public education. They're creating education choice, if you will. Again, all of this is still speculative, and we're not sure where it's going to land. But there are two really big issues that are at stake. The one is the Fair School Funding Plan. This was developed four years ago, and it has reached a point, there's only two more years in this cycle of the Fair School Funding Plan that need to be implemented for it to be complete. It is based on the cost to educate a child, and the state determined what it costs to educate a child. And so there are other factors that come into play: poverty and wealth and all of those things, special education and all of that. But they've determined a number that this is what it would cost. That implementation was phased in, in different, at different percentages, and we've reached a point where we're at the finish line and wanting that to be fully phased in. It's being challenged and pushed back on, and at this point, they're not, they're not recommending to fully fund the plan, and that's going to impact, it's going to impact all of our schools. That is still being tossed around in the Senate. And what that looks like when it comes out, we don't know yet. I was just in a meeting today with Chorus, which is a group of superintendents who gather from Coalition of Rural and Appalachian Schools. And so that has expanded a bit and added some of our Northwestern schools. We have really been active in reaching out to politicians and getting people into those meetings so that we can have influence and we can have say, so that there's understanding that comes with it. Because it's not only just saying the words, it's understanding the impact that comes from these changes. And sometimes, if you're not a part of education, you guys have been on the board, all of you, except Steven, have been on the board for four years now. This is, and it takes some time to understand school and school finance and the intricacies that come with it. And for someone to walk into politics and have no background in education, making assumptions leads to some big impacts that maybe they don't understand. So that is our goal with that group, is to try to create understanding. But the Fair School Funding Plan is one thing, okay, and that's one, that's one thing that could really hurt us if it's not fully implemented. The other part of this is property tax, and property taxes are a big point of discussion. And what they're talking about in property taxes and how that influences schools, that's a portion of our funding and a portion of our support. They're talking about putting a cap on our cash balance, a 30% cap on our cash balance. Not just us. This is for all public schools. All public schools, they're talking about putting a 30% cap on your cash balance, and that for us would be tremendously impactful. We would be, we would lose millions of dollars almost instantly. How that happens is yet really to be worked out, but that could really put us in a bind. Because if you're talking about a two-year budget, if they're going to start capping our cash balance at 30%, we've worked hard to save the money that we have, and we're working hard to continue to save the money that we have, so that we can delay or postpone any time, any kind of attempt to come back to our public. That may be inevitable, but for now, we're trying to be good stewards of our finances. If that happens, that is going to change our financial picture immediately, and it will change how we have to operate. Those two big, those two things, the Fair School Funding and the 30% cap, have the possibility of impacting not just us negatively, but every school, every public school in the state of Ohio will feel that impact. Again, this is still being discussed. It's still being worked out. There is nothing that's final. So it is still, it's speculation. We're not making any drastic decisions because of this, but we are paying attention very closely because we don't want to be caught off guard, and we need to start thinking about what it could look like should some of this happen.
I just want to discuss a couple of things with the forecast, and I know there's a lot of people out there that will compare what was presented in November compared to today. And I'm going to say it is substantially different than what was projected. Part of that is, I know Ms. Ball always growls at me when we always go into executive session, but there's some sensitive things that we have to keep private when we discuss budgets and things like that. So we've had a lot of discussion this spring of what reductions may take place for next year, and those are now baked into this new forecast. But I think, Aaron and I met with Kim yesterday, and I think I would be remiss if we did not state that even though the budget, or the excess, the deficit that we're going to be having over the next two years is less, it's not an accounting gimmick, but I think we need to really let people know that when, 20 years ago, when we built the new school, as Kim stated, that there was a separate little piece in the bond that we were getting that was earmarked 100% for maintenance and upkeep on the building. And we have accumulated that amount over the course of 20 years, and we've spent some of it, obviously. But just for full disclosure, we have about $900,000. But just for full disclosure, we have about $900,000 left in that fund. So to try to soften the blow to the general fund, we are, look, the school is 20 years old. It is a beautiful campus. I keep saying it, I've said it to, at the AFF meeting the other night, I'm like, you scan the grounds. And it's a beautiful campus, and that goes to investing money into the facility. So we have to continue to invest in the facility, and unfortunately, it costs big dollars. And so for now, for, I think what Kim has done, if I may summarize, we are going to hit that fund that we have, the 900,000. Some of the stuff that we would have spent out of the general fund, we're going to spend down that reserve maintenance fund, and it's going to be zero here in two to three years. That has helped our general fund, but I caution everyone that we are still running a deficit even doing that. So while the numbers are drastically down, our deficit is down versus the November forecast, that's why. We're just pulling it from a one-time source that we have. And just to reiterate to everybody, those bonds are, they've been paid off now for almost a year and a year and a half. So there is no more money coming in off of that for maintenance. So we're going to spend that money, maintain the buildings, you know, for a couple of years, but eventually, those capital outlay is going to have to transfer back to the general fund. And I think that's why you'll see in Kim's forecast that in year three, the deficit spending looks even worse. And well, we have drawn off of that reserve all we can. So that's my two cents. I mean, I'll just echo what Mr. Hampton said. Public education, from a financial point of view, politically at the state, is under attack. I don't want to, I'm not getting into a political speech at all, but everything we've seen, it just doesn't look good, not just for Alexander, but it doesn't look good for public education, period. I don't want to speculate because politicians can reverse course quickly, but there's a lot going on at the state that's going to affect us, and we just have to take it day by day, unfortunately, and wait and see what they pass. But based on what Kim has done for this forecast, I think we can all say the first, the first two years of forecast is pretty concrete. There might be a couple of changes that can be made in year two, but for the most part, when you see the deficit spending, it is what it is. So that's going to eat into our reserve. And one more comment, as Mr. Hampton said, the 30%, from a business person's point of view, capping the amount of reserve that a company can have to weather out the ups and downs financially, it will cripple, it would cripple a business, and it's going to cripple a school. If you tell me that I can only have 30%, we might have 55, 60 now, but next year, if you tell me you can only have 30% or we're taking it away from you, it, it doesn't allow us as managers and good stewards to ride those waves. We're going to be doing the waves the whole time. We're going to spend when the money comes in, and we're going to cut drastically. It, to me, is disaster, and that's my soapbox real quick. But we, that's just, that's another front that we're, I'm going to say, in attack. And Lord knows, I think y'all know by now, I'm conservative when it comes to money. But that is not one thing, I hope someone hears it, this is not one thing that you can do to a school or a business and expect good results, is capping the reserve that we have. So I've said my piece.
Just for the sake of asking the question, what are the mechanics? It's all based on property tax, correct? If 30% reserve, they, property tax, we can keep up, down to 30%?
I think it's, they just remove it.
So the connection to the property taxes?
Smoke screen.
Yeah, we're assuming they're just going to remove it.
Mr. Hampton, I think you gave me something maybe a month ago, and if I remember, correct me or jump in if I, but I thought it said that we would have to certify to the county auditor what our budget is and how much 30% is, and then also certify how much more above that we have. And then the county auditor was supposed to do a calculation and refund or somehow credit back to the property tax holders?
That's the way it was presented to me, is that they feel that's how that would play out. I think our county auditor would be jumping stiff leg in Columbus that this isn't going to work. It's going to, you think about the amount of work that's going to come back on them. I mean, it's going to be a lot of work for everyone. So yeah, but that is how it was proposed it could play out.
I just wanted to echo Jay a little bit here, but also dive into a couple of people that might be listening in or want to hear. A lot of what we've done since not only deciding not to go after the levy renewal again, as well as originally when it passed by one vote, we stayed conservative and we continued to reduce through attrition, not make hard cuts. And that's why our cash balance is what it is, was knowing that this day would come, but not knowing that it would then be capped at 30%. So we built ourselves strategically to ride the storm softly, try and coast our way to where we need to be. And this kind of rips the foundation out of our planning. So if there's anybody with a voice there that's listening, they ask us to plan for five years, and they're trying to change that overnight. I can't imagine what that's going to do, not just to our district, but many other districts. And so when you look at that table where we're at, at our cash balance being so high, it's because we haven't spent, knowing that this day was coming. Not the day of capping it off, but the day of deficit spending. And now, what that future holds, we really don't know. So it's very scary on this end, but to ask people project out five years and then rip it out overnight is just flat out wrong, dangerous.
Okay, moving on, do we have any public participation on agenda? Okay. Before I move on to the recommendations and go through all of that, I think it's worth stating for everybody that's in regular attendance and then also that watch us religiously online, I don't know what perfection nickname we want to give this device, but whatever we want to call this, this is the new Mark and Justin, starting next board meeting. MJ2, there we go, MJ2, that's what we're going to call it. So we're still going to record the meeting, we're still going to have the audio and everything associated with it, it's just not going to be live. It will be, Mark, you said it would be updated the next day? Justin shaking his head, okay. So this little thing here is going to be available, it's going to record the meeting. It, it's kind of neat how it does it, the camera can focus on who's talking, and it has a panoramic view as well. So the only thing that I'm going to say the public is going to miss that likes to sit at home and on the couch and eat popcorn during our meetings is you're just going to have to wait tonight. They actually will not be livestreamed. So Josh, I mean, we've been doing this close to eight years, I think, as far as actually livestream. And we have Josh and, or Josh, we have Mark and Justin sitting back there, the whole meeting that we're here, even through executive session, to do all this, and then they've got the time to put stuff away. So just, again, I think I mentioned at last meeting, we're looking to kind of respect their time and their time away from here in the evenings. And just, this is a solution to accomplish the same thing that everybody gets, the transparency that everyone has wanted. It's just going to be a day later. So you can still call us and hear and see what we said during the meeting. Again, it just will not be Wednesday night, it can be Thursday night if you feel like now.
You're right, we've been here till 1:00.
True.
How this was a direct way to. Is a good compromise, it doesn't have to be live, we're still going to be out there in front of everybody, and I think, I think it's a good middle ground.
Okay, with that, moving on to treasurer's recommendations. It's recommended the Board of Education approve the minutes of the April 16th, 2025, regular meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Blake?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
Stephen?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
It's recommended the Board of Education approve the financial statements for the month ending April 30th, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
Blake?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
Stephen?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
It's recommended the Board of Education approve the following transfers, and it's our normal school-wide pool monthly transfers.
So moved.
Second.
Blake?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
Stephen?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
It's recommended the Board of Education approve the financial, a five-year forecast dated May 2025.
So moved.
Second.
Blake?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
Stephen?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Moving on to superintendent's recommendations. It's recommended the Board of Education approve the following substitute teachers as recommended by the Athens Mags DSC Superintendent.
So moved.
Second.
Blake?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
Stephen?
I'll abstain.
Aaron?
Yes.
It's recommended the Board of Education accept the resignation of the following effective the end of the 24-25 school year, and we're adding Rosemary Lamb. That's the addendum that we have, so there's three names.
So moved.
Second.
Blake?
Yes, and thank you.
Jay?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
Stephen?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
It's recommended the Board of Education accept their retirement resignation of Lee Rains effective the end of 24-25 school year.
So moved.
Second.
Blake?
Yes, and good luck.
Jay?
Yes, thank you, congratulations.
Josh?
Yes, and thank you for many moons of support of Alexander.
Stephen?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
It's recommended the Board of Education accept the resignation of Dylan Bannick?
Yes.
25-26 cross-country coach.
So moved.
Seconded.
Blake?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
Stephen?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
It's recommended the Board of Education employ the following supplementals for the 25-26 school year pending their meeting all state and local requirements and the constitution of the complete team for the season.
So moved.
Second.
Blake?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
Stephen?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
It's recommended the Board of Education employ Dave McLaughlin as high school physical education teacher for the 25-26 school year pending his meeting all state and local requirements.
So moved.
Seconded.
Blake?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
Stephen?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
It's recommended the Board of Education employ Nate Perez as athletic director slash special events coordinator with a two-year contract of $49,735 annually pending his meeting all state and local requirements.
So moved.
Second.
Blake?
Yes, and he's currently out there at the track with Trimble. So I'll let him know.
Jay?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
Stephen?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
It's recommended the Board of Education non-renew the following 24-25 school year supplemental contracts.
So moved.
Second.
Blake?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
Stephen?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
It's recommended the Board of Education grant approval for students to participate in the following overnight trips. It's the two listed, and we're adding another one for Spanish club for March 22nd through the 31st of 27th to Paris and Barcelona.
So moved.
Seconded.
Blake?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
Stephen?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
It's recommended the Board of Education approve the following policies for inclusion into the policy and procedures manual as recommended by OSBA.
So moved.
Second.
Blake?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
Stephen?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
I'm going to go just a hair out of order. Our next, next thing on the agenda is to, we're going to go into executive session, but I want to go ahead and respect your time, ma'am, because I noticed you're on the public participation. So I'm just going to go ahead and we'll do public participation for non-agenda items now. If you, if you can, yeah, please.
And then.
And turn the mic, push the button, and the red light will come on.
I saw where you made changes to the policy, I did not see any changes. I tried to look for the previous board minutes, and I did not see any changes to policies regarding communication.
We talked about that, you and I and Mrs. Ralph sat down and talked.
Yes, and you told me that you would bring it to the board.
I told you, we were going to make changes in our handbook, which the board would approve.
The handbook is not yet finished, we've had our first meeting,
and we will have our second meeting in June when everyone's kind of dismissed. That will be up for approval at the next June meeting.
Gotcha.
So yeah, we have talked about it, and we've talked openly about it.
Have there been any updates on any?
We haven't finalized language, but no, we know we're going to add language.
Okay.
To fit what we talked about.
Gotcha.
I'll send you a copy when we're finished.
All right, just wanted to make sure you're still holding up.
Yep, oh yes. And how, how we communicate an injury. So we're going to make changes within our handbook, kind of clarify the steps.
Thanks, Sierra. Okay, so I'm going to make a motion to enter into executive session to discuss the appointment, employment dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of an employer official or the investigation of charges or complaints against an employee or official.
Second.
Blake?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
Stephen?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Quickly, I will stress at this time, we may, we may take action after the executive session. We'll just come out and we'll know after discussion. If you do not stay, our next meeting will be June 25th. We're pushing it to the end of the month to meet some treasury deadlines that we have with the auditor's office. And so June 25th will be the next regularly. We're pushing it to the end of the month to meet some treasury deadlines that we have with the auditor's office, and so June twenty-fifth will be the next regularly scheduled meeting, seven o'clock here in the library. Okay, thank you.
Okay, welcome back. It is 9:43. We'll enter back into regular session. Under business initiated by board members, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the treasurer to issue a public notice regarding the re-employment of William Hampton as superintendent following his service retirement. And the reason for the motion is Mr. Hampton has expressed his desire to retire and rehire. And so we are, we have to make this motion to publish the notice much like we did for one of our previous employees that got rehired just recently. So we're, we're following the same protocol here. But yeah, so Mr. Hampton's expressed his desire to do retire/rehire. This is authorizing Kim to publish the required notice. Kind of a second.
Second.
Mike?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
Steven?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Any board reports? Okay, just, just quick recap. Our next regular meeting will be Wednesday, June 25th here in the library, 7:00 PM. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second. Blake?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
Steven?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.